Great, so good evening. It's July twenty six, six oh two P M. I'd like to call the call the word of the regular meeting on July twenty six, two thousand twenty three. Could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Seth, you have a role, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dustin?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Alan here.
I sure well.
Here.
And churching.
Right. Alright, first we'll go over a few things, posting of the agenda for this evening's meeting. The agenda has been posted seventy hours prior to each meeting at the following locations. That's with the city hall, the crowd public library, as well as the stone building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. At this time, we'll just go to public comment if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak on non-agenda agendaized items this either time. Are there any members of that we have asked to speak or here to speak on non-agent items? Anybody online? Alright, thank you very much. Then we'll move on. I'll go over some of the procedures for the public hearing that we do have. Each commissioner has received plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and has visited each site. The general order for hearing each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case, provide background information and a recommendation. Commissioners, they ask questions of staff after the presentation. The applicant, the applicant will then present their project if they desire to do so. The commission may take the opportunity to ask applicant questions. The hearing will then be opened up for public comment from in-person and teleconference participants. At the conclusion of public comment, the applicant will have a chance to respond to public comments, at which time the public comment will be closed. I will then ask for comments from each commissioner for discussion. Please do not repeat comments made by your fellow commissioners. Commissioners may then vote to approve, deny, or continue a project. In the event of denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberation that were useful in re submitting an application. It is also important to understand that there is a fifteen day appeal period after an action has been taken for the applicant, before the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. At that time, this time, we will now move on to our agenda. First, item number one. Staff.
Yes, this is Kimberly Martinez, Associate Planner, presenting item number one. Item number one is for the consideration of approval for a design review case D R twenty one twenty six and D R twenty two sixty nine at seventeen thirty three Houston Road to construct a new two-story home with a new front yard wall and a removal of one heritage tree. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing single-family residence and construct a new four thousand two hundred and twelve square foot two-story residence with an attached subterranean, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five square foot recar garage and utility area. Both proposals require two designer view actions pursuant to summary, you know municipal code. D R twenty one dash eighty-eight is for the new replacement structure and D R twenty two dot sixty-nine is for the proposed front walls. The project also proposes the following, subject to design review. The new front yard paving that includes a new walkway and driveway under the twenty-five percent previous threshold and the construction of a new barbecue area and Albury dining area. As a whole, the project proposals the removal of two trees. One tree, which is an heritage tree labeled E ten. This is subject to the planning commission's approval due to the current location of the proposed residence. The removal of established tree number E eighteen is subject to the community development director's approval on with the guidance of Urban Forester as it's outside the footprint of the new construction. The city's Urban Forester is recommending approval for the removal of both trees in accordance with the proposed tree replacement on tree replacement proposals. Subject property is not identified on the citywide historic resource survey report. And this project has received six letters, six neighborhood input letters of approval and two of no response. In regards to the new home he proposed, the first floor will have a total of three thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet of livable area. The second floor proposes a total of nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet of livable area and the attached subterranean garage and utility areas, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five square feet. The project is proposing to use casement and fixed windows from Sierra Pacific throughout the home and the proposed roof is a two-piece Mission Clay towel in Tuscan color. The project is proposing the driveway and walkway in the same general location as the existing with the exception of a reduction in hardscape in the front yard. The existing and previous coverage is thirty-six point seven ten percent and the new proposal in previous coverage in the front yard will be twenty-four point nine seven percent. I would like to note that on the analysis table provided in the staff report, staff report under parking, the required parking spacious spacious is actually say two instead of four, so that was a typo. For D R twenty-two additional nine, the applicant is proposing the new front yard three-foot wall maximum, which is going to be a C M U stucco courtyard wall and a front wall with a two-inch brick cap throughout and color to match the proposed residence. The project is exempt from CEQA under section fifteen oh three oh one. And staff finds that the proposed project meets all the required findings and recommends that the planning commission approve the project. I'm available to answer any questions and the applicant is also available.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to city staff of the commission? Commissioner Wright?
Yes, the subterranean parking. Can you explain how it affects, if at all, lot coverage and living space? And can you also let us know how the planning department feels about a policy for subterranean parking in general? If if the planning department does support or oppose, or how it feels about subterranean parking in general in our city?
Sure, so starting with the first question on regards to lot coverage. Because the subterranean parking is underneath the first floor of the home, lot coverage is captured by any covered square footage on the main grading of the property. So it doesn't get double counted. So the subterranean garage is not counted towards the lot coverage. It's the first floor plus any cantilevering second floor areas, which there are some second floor areas that can lever in this specific project, which is counted towards lot coverage. Uh, the parking below is not counted towards the livable area as it's not a basement and it's being utilized as a parking structure. Had it been a basement basement, it would have counted towards the livable area. Um, in general, to your other question, uh, subterranean parking is not is a solution that isn't a front-facing garage as the current home is. Also with the topography of the specific property, it slopes upward to the rear. So there is limited space and by providing a subterranean garage, it reduces the visual massing of the street. Um, at the same time, still providing the code requirement because of the new home regulations and the bedroom count.
Thank you. So two things. First, if I understood you correctly, you think of this more as a site-specific solution rather than something that you would support in every single house in the city, you know, or you just haven't thought of that. And that's fine. I'm just asking that. And secondly, can you remind me what the lot coverage is for this property?
I'll answer the first question.
Thank you.
You're correct. This is a site-specific solution. Therefore, there is no blanket policy in terms of um, any subterranean proposals and so forth. In this case, obviously, we felt it was adequate based on geographical issues this project presents itself. And we wouldn't take any subterranean proposal on a case-by-case scenario. I do want to remind you that the objective design standards for multifamily do have a provision for subterranean. But that's multifamily, not residential. It's not prohibited. And it's again, I think our staff's approach is a case by case.
And in fairness, or just to be correct, we also, I believe in our design standards to encourage or discourage, I suppose, front-facing garages. So I certainly understand that. And I'm sorry to be answering my question, which I do know, but I.
Um, yeah, so the maximum allowed lot coverage and livable area for this specific site is four thousand six hundred and nineteen and they're proposing for lot coverage, three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question with regards to the subterranean parking. If for any reason they were to convert some of that to livable area, would it have to go through a process of?
So, um, I believe they're really tight with the law.
Yeah, so they're allowed forty-six hundred and they're at forty-two. So.
And they're required to car garage and so.
It's a two-car with a detachable.
With the detach, so they have to have two cars. So that's, you know, unless they build something somewhere else. Um, if it's an A D, for example, eight hundred square feet, you know, there's not much we can do about that. So it depends on the scenario. But they're required to have a two-car garage, so they would have to have it somewhere.
Right, but they have a three-car garage, so in theory, they could convert some of the subterranean to livable area. And then up to another what would be four hundred square feet? And but and I guess what I'm wondering is would the city be aware of if that conversion wanted to happen, the city could have to be aware?
Obviously, anyone can do anything illegally, but if if they were to be legalized, it would have to go through us.
And you also remind me the about the utility area that is also not included in the livable space, correct?
Correct. Because the utility area doesn't have its own defined room. It's an open space within the shared garage area. It's not counting. Now, had the utility area been divided and the garage is separated, then yes, that basement utility area would count. Now, it probably is, it's small enough to not meet the basement threshold, but if it had have been bigger, um, then yes, you're right, it would have counted towards that area.
And it's and it's how how much as far as, because it's not the four hundreds or over four hundred square feet that would make them go over there, forty-six hundred maximum?
I'm sorry.
The utility area, what square footage is that?
I haven't. Really, the question is, is it over four hundred square feet?
It shouldn't be.
I don't remember. I don't believe. Oh, I just wrote the thirteen hundred eighty-five square foot underground utilities. I didn't write what it was by itself. We can hold now if somebody else has a question.
Hundred ninety-five.
A hundred and eighty-five, that's, yeah, thank you. Thank you for answering my question.
Alright, thank you very much. No other questions for staff from commissioners? Alright, at this time, is the applicant present? You please approach this, stand and speak, you say your name, address.
Good evening, this is Chairman and members of the board. I am Alex Chang, office at eighty-seven thirty hundred and drive, Design Incorporated. I'm the project representative and we also have a property owner today. And I will bring up them just to introduce themselves, if I may. Sorry. It's a shy from the public. Okay, so I will just start my brief presentation. If I may to. When the first stage of the.
Like foundation?
It's a published this one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I started. When I approached this site, first thing that I thought was number one, Tudor style is very massive, although it's only a single story. Uh, the interior space is all high ceiling, lot area is more than fifteen feet. So that will, today's call, it will count twice as well for it. Secondly, what I observed was the garage door facing the street. As a member of mission that that is not ideal for the summary of it. First thing I observed was the large hardscape in the front yard. So I thought maybe with a new design that we can improve this item that I was being mentioned. And after designing it and go through the serious proposal, then we thought this is the solution. On the map, you don't see it, but on the drawing, you will see that the profile is showing in front of, up behind the elevation. So it's really cut down the massing. And number one, number two, all the landscape will be added to the front yard, which is those hardscape areas. And the garage door now is facing on the side into the bear. Uh, because the original proposal, the garage is already subterranean into the hillside, which is the uphill side. If we want to design a two-car or three-car detached garage, we'll have a very difficult time to do so because the garage will be very high along the contour. So by doing this way, we're again landscaping, we're hiding the garage doors and the driveway to enter the garage will not be able to see it on the street view. So I thought this is a pass. What plan? By looking at this floor plan, the building is well articulated. It's not a square box. We created this entry courtyard to the front, which is very important to Spanish home design. With the little waterfront is on the side, it's really helping to enter the the house. And coming from the driveway to walk up through the experience of landscaping and elevator stairs. I think that would be a very good experience. Second floor. Uh, it goes to the second floor. As you can see, the second floor is very minimal space, approximately nine hundred square feet. Doing this way, we can really lower the massing on the entire elevations and also articulate it with a very simple roof line to hide into the entire house. Speech please. Yeah, all of the entire house is only one portion in the middle. That is a second story. The rest of the area of the house is all single-story throughout. Which is for one. As I mentioned, comparison to the existing to the proposed plan. Uh, dotted line is showing the existing area. And some elevation on the east side is really, really cut down the massing almost twenty-five percent. And the way the layout of this design was really followed the design style of our city. We set back the second floor, so when you visual from the street elevation, you really see the single story. In fact, we set back quite a bit, some area up to twenty-five feet. Uh, the front elevation that I mentioned earlier, the massing has been tremendously. And now it is very simple and two-story homes. This, the lower elevation, I also want to emphasize on the side, on the both side of the building, it's a massing, it's really reduces. Uh, maybe at the, when you visit the site, the black hole is not really showing. It's all hidden in that very steep roof line. Uh, the rear, we have a balcony there and it's also tucking. There's no privacy issues for our neighbors. In fact, they, both neighbor are really supportive project. As you can see, the diagonal thirty-degree line, it's it's away away from the those dotted lines showing. And the material will be, roof material will be city pre-approved U S tile. And the simple stucco, one color. And the aluminum clad window and doors. Special detail treated, utilize the clay tile with the chimney and the balcony. So this will hide into the entirety sign. Uh, the rest will be just a simple documentation, a window schedule, documented very clearly, each window sizes and the shade in detail for your review and that's pretty much it. Presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant from commissioners? But alright, thank you very, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, we'll open the discussion to public comment. Are there any members of the public collect or to speak on or about this project? Seeing none, anyone on teleconference? Alright, then we'll close the public comment portion and move on to commissioner discussions. Let's start with Commissioner Wright.
Hey, um, well, this is a very challenging lot. I was really surprised and struck by it when I went to the backyard and saw a huge slope and that so much of the lot is not usable really unless there's a tremendous amount of grading, which I'm not a big fan of. So I do think there are just a lot of challenges, the way it sets up that whole lot itself, that block is, the houses are very interesting, although they somehow seem to kind of go together. I'm quite forget that on. And I also should note that they do all have front-facing garages, so that was obviously something that developer did at the time, so that's sort of interesting. Um, so I so I wasn't, I was bothered by this subterranean parking, but in discussing with staff and hearing what staff has to say and looking at it, I can understand the the appeal of it because it does help reduce the massing. I do like the fact that they're reducing the front yard in hardscape. I think that's also a good thing. So there are certainly good things about this project in light of it's very challenging, I think, um, building aspects. For me, I'm not sure anybody will agree with me. For me, I'm not a big fan of the roof. I think it's a very, you know, if you look at our our design guidelines and it talks about character-defining features, it talks about a flat roof with the red tile parapet cap or low condition, or roof with little or no overhang for a Spanish colonial revival. And I'm not sure that I defer to more experts than I, but I'm not sure that that's what I would say about this roof. And I think it could be better done to to go along with our our design guidelines. So, um, as far as the front wall, I think that's fine. The front wall and the findings, the findings I'll follow when I got there, made a lot of students to have a three-foot long there. Again, in light of that type of of lot. So I think that's that's supportable and the tree I would be willing to go along with the arduous recommendation as far as the tree. So those are my, my, my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Boyle.
Thank you. Um, so I guess the first thing I would say is that I do believe that this, well, let me just put it, there's no love lost in terms of having this house raised and a new one put up. I was very surprised at well, just going in the back and seeing some of the other architectural details, just how I feel like it was really the whole block seems inconsistent with some of the excellent architecture we have throughout the city. Um, but, uh, where I'm at right now is when I was looking through the design, all I kept thinking to myself is less is more. There were a lot of, it was like there was too much house, little details and not enough good design. And like what I mean by that is specifically the exterior of the nook area. Um, I don't think that's within the architectural style and it seemed very busy to have the nook and the fountain and the trellis and the garden on the side. And those things were making this house seem a little bit bigger than it needed to be and not so refined. I know that everybody loves having their en suite bathrooms, but the overhang of bedroom three over the driveway for me is is absolutely unacceptable. And so I think that bedroom two and three could probably share a bedroom and that would reduce some of the size that the overhang wouldn't need to be there. Um, the garden, I mean, I can't believe I'm advocating for the removal of more green space, but the little garden that's between, I think, the living room, the hall, the library, and then there's a foyer. It just seems like all of that could be condensed a little and more seamless and I keep saying refined. Um, I don't believe, and I will look to some of, I'll look to Commissioner Dustin because he is so well-versed in architectural style. I don't think the gate is consistent with the with this style. Um, and then in terms of the landscape, I'm good with the tree removal. I appreciate the fact that you're adding green space to the front. Um, the oaks are giving a really good shade canopy and it seems like they will not be impacted by construction at all. Um, I would like to suggest to the owners that since you have so many plants that seem to be drought tolerant, there is a new ground cover called Carapia and I can give a chameleon than how to spell that. It is a drought tolerant, dog-friendly, kid-friendly gorgeous ground cover and it only needs to be watered every fourteen days. And it's a really excellent substitution for St. Augustine, which has to be watered every, every other day. Um, and yeah, with regards to the subterranean garage, it's not my favorite. I don't want it to become precedent, but as long as we do have it, that we're reviewing it as a case-by-case situation, I am fine with it because it does remove the front-facing garage. And that's it.
Thank you for sharing. Appreciate that, Commissioner Dustin.
Okay, um, yeah, I also have no love lost for this existing home going. It's always a shame because it's always, it seems like a really cute, character-loaded houses that are slated for demolition and being replaced with something mediocre. And here we have something that really just should never have been built to begin with. Um, that being said, I won't give any slack as to what it's being replaced with. It has to be something of quality. The biggest thing that tips off a home that has been built recently as opposed to something that was built in, you know, the twenties or the thirties with the bulk of our housing stock is not sticking to an architectural style and just sort of doing a mosh pit of different things and throwing in little details because you like the details, but they don't have anything to do with the style that you've chosen. This is not a Spanish colonial revival style home. It is a mashup of Mediterranean and Spanish style. Precast columns are not in keeping with the style. The big wide-brimmed urns are not in keeping with the style. As Commissioner Wright had mentioned, the the roof has some issues with it. Also, again, what jumped out at me was that little nook area with the sort of octagonal paneling sitting on the walls. Um, that is just not something that you would find. That's very contemporary design and it doesn't fit. Um that is just not something that you would find, that's very contemporary design, and it doesn't fit. And um the other thing that sticks out with me, and I mean, a lot of stuff that's being done here is right. I mean, I think I I am not a fan of subterranean parking, but in this situation, it absolutely works because uh it solves a lot of problems. Um so I'm okay with it. What I'm not okay with is the cantilever ring of the second floor over the driver. That just, again, that's not a, that's not a solution to preserve design integrity. That's a solution to preserve interior volume, and that's a very different decision. The it's just a horrible commercial look that you would see on an apartment building in, you know, La Fuente something. It's not something you want to see in residential design in San Marino. It doesn't fit. I think they've done a really good job with the landscaping, um and I'm okay with the tree removal. But those those design elements are are just very hard for me to get past.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Brody, your comments.
Yeah, I I uh I concur essentially with those comments. I have absolutely no problem with this subterranean parking. This particular home is seated on a on a lot that has very unusual geography. Uh there's no other way, and I thought about it, there's no other way to achieve parking other than subterranean. Um I have no problem with the arborist viewpoint. Um and I'm, I looked at the home, and I looked at others on Houston as well. A very unique street compared to some of the other streets we have. Uh say the least, if there's someone to come out the door, not you ma'am, someone else uh on that street, Bell Bottoms and and so forth, but harkening back to the nineteen seventies, but uh never happened. Uh I have the same problem with design. I think you're about ninety percent there. I think it needs design tweaks, uh some significant, some not so significant. But uh I like what you've done. It's a heck of an improvement over what was there before. Uh and with a couple of uh significant design changes that I don't think are rocket science. You can actually have a uh a a theme uh that is consistent throughout this particular structure. That's what was needed. By extent.
Thank you. Um yeah, I I can agree with most of the commissioners' comments, specifically uh the cantilever portion uh above the subterranean parking area, I think gives the appearance of a home that it's off balance and off kilter and it'll fall over at any moment. So that's, I don't, I think that needs to be addressed. I I don't, I think even if you could shift that massing to to the, I guess that would be to the west of the building, um would be better. And again, I I'm just trying to see what your setback is on the on that side of the building, but if there's an opportunity to even shift, that would be beneficial. Um I I am appreciative of the overall reduction in massing from what was existing. Uh however, I think the roofline conversation that a lot of commissioners have been talking about is is really almost this pop-up effect of the second story in the back. And and I would say that's partly attributable to your eight foot six plate plus another five feet uh on top for the actual roof. So if some, you know, creative design can occur where you can actually have vaulted ceilings in there to have the height you're looking for, but lower the overall plate height, maybe you can achieve that. Again, I'm just I think that would overall make the home look more balanced and not so much like a pop-up. I'll tell you those, you know, the the embellishments that are seen through, I think can be reduced. Chosen to be more aligned with the architectural style. Um it is a Spanish colonial revival. Um but again, I think there is a, there's definitely an opportunity to um continue on this project, to refine it and to make it more compatible with itself. I want to say compatible there, but that's not necessarily going to help anybody, but compatible itself. So those are my comments. Do we have a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I'm Mr. Chair. Um you received the public comment at six twenty-four. Um the resident missed Shirley Jago's names that it was done prior to the closing of the period, I mean, at the public comment period. Um it is at your pleasure whether you want to reopen.
Is she present or she?
Oh, it's three email.
It was three email. Um and and she's on Zoom. Yeah, I mean, if if she had missed the window by a moment, let's let's just introduce, I guess, what
You would have to reopen.
Okay, so at this time, let's reopen the public comment for one additional comment from a a public member who is unable to join at the moment. Um she's from, she's uh watching us from YouTube, so I'll read her.
Sure. Um Ms. Jiggles states, I am against the removal of an heritage tree and request the planning commission denied this project. I'm also concerned about the subterranean basement, which often becomes quasi-livable space, and that could impact the trees on property. Two, electric cars catch fire and having the garage under the livable space is very dangerous. Re-converting the subterranean basement utility area would be hard to do illegally and hard for the city to prevent and review. Uh four, the property is on an earthquake fault and more engineering needs to be completed before a rebuilt ship be considered by the city. That concludes her comments.
Can I ask a question? Is she actually a neighbor, you said?
Uh she's a resident. I don't understand whether she's a neighbor or not.
She she she, yeah, she lives on Wilson over by Stoneman.
Okay, um and and the member is not on the call to make any comments, correct? Alright, so then we note the comments from the member of the public, and we will close all the comments at this time. Uh do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to continue uh design review twenty-one dash twenty-six and design review twenty-two dash sixty-nine at seventeen thirty-three Houston Road um to a date to be decided. Now, what would the next level date be for rehearing or what would plans be to?
Yeah, I would staff recommended and turned because of the changes that are requested. That's going to take some time. It's not going to be able to be done prior to.
And then I would ask the applicant, is that except, I mean, do is that we we don't have any streamlining act requirement or this problem? Okay, very good. Alright, um then for a time to be returned.
It will be later to the time to be determined.
Okay, uh so we have a motion from Commissioner Justin. Do I have a second? Commissioner Wright with the second roll call, please.
Commissioner ready?
Uh yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Jane?
Yes. Alright, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, agenda number two. I just want to say they haven't really sneaked up. Good to know.
Yes, Rosie.
Alright, uh we'll move on to agenda number two for the consideration of CUP number twenty-two national five and CUP twenty-two national six at two-two-seven-seven Huntington Drive for the determination of required parking and to provide for alcohol sales and consumption of the host restaurant. A staff report, please.
Uh this is Assistant Planners of Oxasunia for the staff report uh presenting uh CUP case numbers twenty-two dash oh five and CUP eight uh twenty-two dash oh six at twenty-two seventy-seven Huntington Drive. Excuse me. The applicant proposes a new restaurant named El Dorado Pollos Salado Brasa or El Dorado for short, at the existing uh commercial unit located at twenty-two seventy-seven Huntington Drive. El Dorado is also requesting a type forty-one alcohol license for the onsite sale of beer and wine. Uh the following actions are required. Uh conditional use permit number CUP twenty-two dash oh five for the determination of required parking and CUP twenty-two dash oh six to provide for the sales and consumption of alcohol. The commercial unit at uh twenty-two seventy-seven Huntington Drive was formerly used as a restaurant. And it's improved with a commercial kitchen uh and indoor dining space. Uh the last business license on file was for chicken terrier, uh which expired in twenty-twenty-one. Uh based on the existing uses at the multi-tenant building, which include retail and professional office uses, staff calculated approximately twelve required parking spaces. Uh the site offers twenty off-street parking spaces. Uh to mitigate potential concerns for parking, staff has recommended many of the same conditions that Starbucks was approved with on the same site. Uh one such condition uh was modified to a little different than Starbucks uh to require trash bins to be emptied and cleaned as frequently as necessary, both to remain shut and also to prevent orders, uh so even partially open trash bins would not be allowed. Uh staff's analysis found that the project is meeting the conditions required for onsite sales and consumption of alcohol. Including the five hundred foot separation distance for other retailers of alcohol and from schools. Uh the nearest school is San Marino High School located half a mile away. Uh the San Marino Police Department uh reviewed the project and had no major concerns for the project as it is proposed. Only one uh concern was uh listed, which was the potential for minors to gain access to alcohol if outdoor dining was permitted. Staff has recommended a condition condition to mitigate the concern. Finally, if uh the CUP for parking is denied, uh the applicant may have the opportunity to modify the floor plan. Uh so the indoor seating area occupies twenty-five percent more less uh to be classified as a small restaurant. In such case, uh the applicant may receive administrative approval for their operations, and of course, that doesn't apply to the alcohol CUP. Um and that concludes staff's report. Staff is available to answer the committee's questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh do we have commissioner questions for staff? Commissioner Dustin, and then um did you say that the prior restaurant Chicken Terrier had a alcohol license?
Uh no, to um it they had a business license, but not an alcohol license.
Did they ever, like, were they ever actually open?
Uh but I don't have the information to say for sure. It looks like they applied during uh COVID. It's possible that they obtained the business. It looks like they obtained their business license, but it's possible that they never opened for business. I did see in our case log, they also applied for a commercial sign, but um it I'm not aware if they actually opened or not.
I don't remember reviewing them here, but I don't remember them ever being open for business. Um let's see, I was just curious why, why we aren't reviewing everything for them for like design review for signage and all that at this one time? Is that because they could reduce the square footage like you mentioned and come back for administrative approval or?
Uh no, so um the applicant, um uh I gave the applicant the option to present the sign at the same time. Um and uh they opted not to do that at this time. Uh I'm I don't want to speak on behalf of them as to why. I think time, what was of the essence. They didn't want to delay the project being presented.
Uh and then last question, do you know what the frequency is currently for the uh emptying of the dumpster that's there for that campus?
I'm not aware of the frequency. Um I wouldn't be able to answer that question right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh Vice Chair Boyle, you had some questions?
Uh yes, thank you. It was uh along the lines of the trash bin as well, um because you said that the trash would need to be picked up as necessary and that the uh lid could not be partially opened or opened all the way. And I'm wondering, how is that enforced? Because currently, those two conditions do not apply, uh meaning Starbucks is consistently overfilling, uh leaving trash on the side as well as leaving the bins open or, you know, the lids open. And uh I'm concerned that now with two restaurants filling this bin and one of which having a food item that would be very attractive to, let's say, coyotes in a residential neighborhood or near a residential neighborhood, I would like to know how this is intended to be enforced.
Um to my knowledge, uh I don't believe that staff was aware of the issue uh with the existing trash bins and with Starbucks. I think that's something that we can take a look into to make sure that the condition's being enforced. Um and um uh the similar condition would apply in this case. So um if there is that issue now, I think we have to address it.
And I guess it really kind of comes down to like how are, and sorry that this become is becoming a general conversation, but when we do have conditions put on a business, how are they enforced first? Is it, you know, because it seems as though code enforcement isn't driving around, um and this also comes up because part of our code says that if we do allow this alcohol, that there can be no exterior advertising. And at least on Mission Street, all of the businesses that have uh uh alcohol permits, beer and wine permits, they all advertise out on their on the sidewalk. So, you know, we have this condition that that can't be allowed, but it's clearly being allowed. So how are we enforcing these conditions more because?
A couple of things. Uh staff was made aware of the trash issues uh last week, and part of the amendment to the uh condition pretending to trash was a result of that conversation. And uh part of this, part of this exercise, the property owner and the two businesses, and if you were to, I have to say, if you were to approve of this business, there are notice now that these conditions will be uh adhered to or there will be consequences, specifically because city hall is right across the street. Um court enforcement has been reactive for the past few years because of understaffing. Currently, we're fully staffed with two of the uh new court enforcement officers being trained. So uh pretty soon, uh you will be seeing more court enforcement presence in the city. Uh one of the things that we're concentrating right now is the baking home properties, which were actually pretty successful. We've now generated about forty-something um registrations where we have like one or three or something like that. So uh things are shifting in a positive way in the court enforcement, so we'll be taking a look at more of these things more often now. Uh and so um I know it's not the not the best match, sure, I could give you right now, but because there are being trained, soon enough, you'll see the presence of court enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners for staff?
Yes, I'm sorry. I
Commissioner Wright?
Sorry, this just reminded me that I had a um comment, so I'll question about enforcement of the condition related to employees not parking in the the designated parking for the um for the business. I'm just not sure how that's going to be enforced as well. I would just say, court enforcement has its hands full. I will say I saw a court enforcement on my street, which is actually amazing recently. So I think I think they are becoming more active.
And to speak to that, uh again, um one of the things that we're doing as part of this exercise, if this project is approved, regardless of whether it's not, because you still have a tenant with Starbucks, is that we're taking this opportunity to uh discuss these matters with the property owner and the tenants um and to uh with them, I noticed that uh court enforcement will be taking a close look at your operations. And um staff will also be sending a letter out to go businesses in the city to let them know that all COVID-era uh leniencies will no longer be in place.
Alright, thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, uh is the applicant present? You please uh approach and state your name and address and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Uh my sister-in-law and brother to a medical their daughters. Um I'm speaking for both of them.
Did you provide an address? I'm sorry, I heard your name.
Uh to the location here?
Uh your your address.
Okay, Pasadena is one forty East Orange Row. Thank you very much.
Sir, can you make sure you're speaking to the microphone?
Sorry, yeah. Uh we opened El Dorado in Pasadena in December of twenty sixteen. We were lucky enough then uh to make it through the pandemic. Born and raised in the city of Pasadena, I'm really familiar with the city of San Marino. Been around um the port, uh being up in here and bringing our uh food to the city. Um, I did, you guys addressed the trash situation, which we're made aware of of prior to that day, pick up the trash day. Uh, so it is emptied out daily. What we have noticed in the time that we've been there since we acquired the lease was that um, I noticed a lot of the boxes are broken down in the trash can and that kind of takes up a lot of space. Uh, our passing the location, we get our trash picked up every two to three days. And our staff is, city is also made us aware of this over the time that we need to keep the lids covered and bags tied and boxes broken down and side of the trash bins. So uh, I think we've done a pretty good job to that. And uh, you know, if approved, um, you know, going to make sure that the staff is aware that that is something that needs to be uh closely watched, just to avoid any kind of coyotes or rats or anything. Um. Something uh that I was made aware of as well was hours of operation and how our parking be impacted, like Starbucks being so busy in the morning. I think one thing that works in our benefit is that uh plants open from eleven to eight, uh, which I think is the majority of Starbucks pineapples. Probably from five to about ten, eleven is when they have their biggest rush and we wouldn't, you know, be opening it after that. Um, our model for this business is a lot, what's definitely a lot smaller than our passing the location. I would say about a third or four is the size of what we have now. Um, the passing the location is more of a dining. But at the same time, I would say about fifty percent of our business is also allowed to go. So we're kind of doing uh with this location, since it is a lot smaller, is having about three to four tables in nor and doing more of a to-go model. Uh, with that being said, we probably serve everything in to-go containers as opposed to how we do now at our current location, where we do plating or to-go option as well. Um, as far as the beer and wine, it makes up for very minimal of ourselves. We don't promote it at our location in Pasadena. We have no exterior signage. Um, it's just something that we operate a compliment. Uh, we do proven food. Just offer a couple of the um proving beers to go on with the food. Uh, we don't push it very hard. We don't want to sell hardly girl. People don't come to our establishment to get drunk and that's definitely not the here. Now, other than that, as far as like the logistics goes, uh, so I'm made me aware of like delivery times and um affecting the street or having large deliveries come at five hours of the day. I see it's going to serve as more of our hub for all that, all our deliveries will be taken to. And a lot of our stuff is done in-house by myself as far as uh bringing things back and forth for the restaurant. So we plan to do that here to minimize the amount of traffic or congestion that we cause. Um, I have been made aware about the employee parking and I've taken up the customer parking in the back. Um, and yeah, any other things that we need to uh address or alter, we're more than open to.
Thank you very much. Conclude your comments. Great. Are there any questions from committee member, commission members to the applicant? Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, is there any reason why you just didn't give us the signage that you're using Pasadena? I imagine you want to replicate it here, right?
Who, uh, we would like to alter it slightly. It's, it's very bright, colorful, maybe do a little bit, something more subtle. We really haven't gotten around to the design of that. I think we're mostly concentrated on getting the approval, uh, because what we do have to do is install a hood. And uh, initially we had submitted all the plans and gotten the uh okay. And then I think we got an issue with the conditional ease for the parking. So that's, I guess, what we had to address first. Um, and at the time, uh, I was told, you know, we would have to submit it within like a week or two prior to this meeting taking place. And at the time I wasn't looking into any companies or ideas. I think more so we were trying to just get, I think, we might just start that actual, you know, putting the restaurant together and then uh eventually address that. Um, I was told as well that signage has certain specifications that have to meet. And uh, there's have to be approved by the city first. So we plan to, you know, hear any of those things as well.
Okay. And and uh, I just pulled up the signage and it is uh, it is right out there. It's pretty bold.
Yeah, we don't have to do something that crazy here. It's definitely a lot smaller than that sign we did seven years ago and ball Vegas, so.
Right. Well, you tell me you're not going to replicate which in Pasadena and San Marino.
Yeah, I don't think so. Well, I know we, we're not. Yeah, we would, we would, I mean, we're open to any kind of operation. Obviously, the name will stand, but if there's anything that uh you guys aren't in agreements with, we're more than happy to make any kind of adjustments.
Not something we want to share.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And any other questions for uh, yeah, we can. Commissioner? All right. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now see if there's anyone from the community that'd like to make a comment about or for this project. Great. Uh, please state your name and address and please speak into the mic.
Looking here. So this is Linda Gutiérrez, twenty-two thirty-five Ridgeway. I'm right behind this strip. And um, I sense some, so I'm going to answer a few questions as I've been living there thirteen years. I think I'm well experienced on that little strip. Every day the trash dump. Right in the morning, very loud. However, we knew we were going to live next to Starbucks. I cannot complain about that. Um, and every day is full and every day it gets empty. And every day they have to put a cone. That's the, they never close the lid, as you can see. Can we have more photos than one where there's a cone? They have to do that. So one parking space less because there's just not enough. Such a big truck, right? So that's been implemented years now. Um, somebody does that, to be honest. I don't know who it is, but the cone comes in and then it's taken off. So that's uh one of your questions and definitely rats, coyotes, always a problem. It's, it's just part of, you know, San Marino, but when we have an open trash can, there's a lot more animals that come, no doubt. And with this heat, they're going crazy. So let's, you know, the heat is worse now. But that's one picture. The other picture is the liquor license number forty-one. I send that to you, right? You sure? That was a blast. So I just want to make sure we all understand this liquor license is forty-one. I'm not sure that was um information you received, but I called ABC. By the way, amazing organization that actually answered the phone the first time I call. They gave me the information where to go. I looked up the license. Then I looked up the Pasadena. It's liquor license forty-one. And they're allowed to also sell uh liquor, uh beer and wine as pick-up. And I have a problem with that because that means that you can call. How do you know if it's a minor or not when you're calling for delivery? I am wondering what the procedure is on that in the Pasadena. Um, and uh, so I said to this person, the liquor license, is there a license to only serve beer and wine in the restaurant? And how she didn't understand me. So what she did say is that when they have um liquor license forty-one, it's up to the owner of the liquor license to say, I'm only going to serve it in the restaurant and not for delivery. So it's at their discretion. So I called New Moon and I asked him, do you deliver beer and wine? When I ordered for them, they said no. So that's just, you know, my own little research that I did. My other concern is obviously the parking. The reason for that already, when we came here for Starbucks, there were all the employees parks right next to stepping stones, right? So UPS also employees parked there. But now we're going to add them to this employees parking. That parking will get exhausted. Um, Starbucks did not get their dry through, their tire dry through, but they got their foot dry through, right? Cause we all call and we all walk to Starbucks. So there is a lot of times where it's really congested. I wouldn't say it's congested twenty-four seven. No. But it is congested in certain hours. They do add up UPS who has so many mailboxes and all of us go there. And so UPS um truck parks there. And we, that.
Then if you can wrap up your comments.
Okay. And so these are the pictures. And if you could, I don't think you ever saw the liquor license picture. And so let me see, the conclusion I have really is that I don't want a ghost kitchen. I don't want the beer license to be delivered and no counter sale that anybody can counter in the trash ordinance. This staff really uh looked at and that. Thank you.
So much. Is there any other comments from community members?
If I could just clarify for Ms. Gutierrez that there is currently a condition that is proposed to uh make sure that sale of alcohol is on site. Again, we've talked about enforcement. There's always an enforcement issue, but for now that is a proposed condition.
Director Fager. Actually, I'd like to clarify that there's actually state law that uh preempts any local ordinance uh due to COVID. As if you recall, uh, businesses were allowed to sell off-site to-go orders to keep them afloat. Well, that became law and now law sunsets on like the twenty-twenty-six. Right. So from this point, there, eh, every restaurant, uh, whether it's in San Marino or Pasadena nearby, you order, it can, it could have the option of selling alcohol to go.
So our condition is illegal? Is that what you're saying? Cause I'm reading a proposed condition, conditions of Google for C U B twenty-two oh six. I might have got the wrong thing.
Yeah, it's, it's the standard condition for alcohol. Uh, what we should have added is obviously that it needs to uh comply with state law. And right now currently the state law states that you can sell off-site to-go orders, but it has to be with food. So it's not outside, meaning you can just order the wine or the beer. It has to be with food. And that's a stable. So that preempts our order. Thank you, uh, Director. Does that verify? Okay. All right, um, if, can you please approach and state your name, address, uh, speak into the mic? And then we will uh limit your, try to limit your discussion to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hector Gutierrez, twenty-two thirty-five Ridgeway. And uh, I can just continue on the fact with about the situation with the ABC uh liquor license and the forty-one is, uh, it is state law, just like the C D O says. But if you look into the conditions of the forty-one, it also says that the restaurant has to provide a specific number of mandatory seating of uh servicing. So the majority of the servicing, and I don't know what exactly that, 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 that number is, must be done inside the restaurant in order for them to do the go, the to-go um sales on liquor. That is a condition that is on. So um, so as you know, uh, they want to go ahead and uh have the CUP because there isn't enough parking for this restaurant. And I don't know if all of you all know is that there is already a condition for Starbucks because they don't have enough parking. And when this building was built, the strip, it was a CUP done because it did not have enough parking. But it seems like we're just stacking CUP onto CUP onto CUP. I hear a lot of, well, you know, some of the other owners were not really taking advantage of their parking. What happens when they do? They could have, right now you're giving an unconditional, unlimited uh, unlimited pass for this restaurant to uh enjoy that parking space or um to, to uh continue on with their business. So if the other businesses decide that they want to use their space, well, I guess they're going to be out. They're going to have to look for somewhere else. Another thing that I have is that I don't know why somebody would open up a restaurant with such a gigantic kitchen and a very tiny dining area. The economics doesn't make sense to me unless they're going to go primarily or majority of takeout orders. Um, I understand that the city of San Marino is not looking for ghost kitchens. And they're really looking for a, a really sit-in and dine-in area. Uh, there is some kind of economic mandate with, with the, that the city is trying to promote. But uh, new restaurants to come in. Uh, and I don't know if this is why they're trying to push this through. So that's one thing that I have to say. So another thing is that San Marino is not a drive-by town. San Marino is a place where you come, sit down and enjoy the environment. And I believe everyone here on this seat kind of recognizes that. And this is what uh I think the dining experience that we are looking uh, the parking problems. Somebody said there's no parking. If you go down Ridgeway, you can see all the green that's painted on the curves. That was there done for a reason. It was there done because there's been parking, parking problems in the past. And with the addition of uh a restaurant that is conditioned that doesn't have, meet the parking requirements, you're going to continue to have parking problems. Why is that? Because you have a small dining area. You have a small dining area, you have a patron that comes in. Well, you know what? There's no place for me to sit. I'll go out and need my car. Huh? It's kind of hot out here. Let me drive out into this nice, beautiful neighborhood where there's plenty of trees where I can sit under a tree or park under a tree, enjoy my snack, you know, and take care of my business. Where does that trash go? Usually it goes out onto the curb or into my trucks. So um, those are the things that I want to talk about. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, any other members of the public like to speak? Anyone online that would like to speak? We have. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we will close public comment portion of this hearing and move into.
Yes, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Uh, we did receive one uh email of the comment. I'm not sure if it was forwarded to you. Oh, then disregard.
Yeah, I think we received it. It was also a neighbor close to approximately the restaurant. My apologies. Okay. Uh, thank you very much for that reminder. Uh, we will close public comments and move on to commissioner discussions. Uh, Commissioner Brody.
Uh, I mean, just say I'm, I'm not a fan of piecemeal movements. Uh, I'd like to see the whole project and by the whole project, I want to see the signage as well. Uh, I don't want this coming in piece by piece. Uh, and I'm troubled by um what potentially could happen with regard to signage. I'm also a little bit perturbed uh as to the uh parking scenario. I'd like to have a little more color on that. So uh presently on this piecemeal project, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Dustin. Um. So I did a lot of research for this project um into liquor licenses specifically. Um, this is sort of the ancillary rant on my part. I'm just hoping there's some council members on call, but we need to do some revisiting of our um ordinances that have to do with liquor licenses in this town. There are some serious discrepancies between what we say and what the ABC says. The ABC doesn't really even know what they're saying part of the time because they distribute licenses based on census tracts. Well, US Census Department has updated their census tracts. We now have three in the city, not two, like our ordinances are based on. So um, there's just a lot of problems there and I would really strongly encourage city council to make that a priority to revisit this because uh, we approved a liquor license up in the Mission District not too long ago. If I had known what I know now, I would have not supported that because the information that we had was not accurate at the time. Um, so that needs to be taken care of. That being said, uh, for this particular application, I have no problem with the request for the liquor license. Um, it's, there, there are no licenses in the track that this business is in. Um, and I think I don't see any, any problems with that. Um, that's just an issue for the agency to enforce like they do any other um liquor license. It's a little different when we come to the CUP request for the parking. This, this is a very tricky situation. Um, and I apologize. I want to get home and watch the women's national team as much as anybody, but um we, I don't like seeing residents become responsible for tracking and enforcing ordinances like this. Um, it's just not okay. They, they shouldn't be a, a part-time job for them to have to do this. Um, and I have gone by there every day. The dumpster is always full. I'm shocked to hear that it's emptied every day because every time I went by, it was full and there were boxes on the ground next to it. And the lids were either not, either propped open with piles of trash or, or just flipped back. Um, and, and it shouldn't be the residents' job to attend to that and then pick up the phone and call City Hall. It just shouldn't. Um, so I'm, I'm encouraged here that code enforcement is beefed up. I also have seen them more frequently on the streets, so I'm encouraged by that. But I'm also very gun-shod, given what we went through with Starbucks at this location. Um, it also is a little trickier because this restaurant is going to generate a lot more sort of hardcore food garbage than. sort of hardcore food garbage than Starbucks will. You're going to have chicken carcasses and, you know, just food that has the potential to attract a lot more problems than, you know, packaging. Um, the other issue that I really have a concern with, I think the, the solution for the Starbucks in moving everybody into that public lot over by stepping stones and between stepping stones and Sierra Madre is a good solution and I think there is adequate capacity there to absorb the staff from this establishment as well. But who's to say that they don't also park on Huntington in front of the store? And those are prime locations. Another big concern that I have is if they're already picking up the trash daily, where's the extra trash going to go? The only salute there is, I looked at that campus, there is no place for another dumpster. That means you're going to have to increase the frequency of pickup. Now you're going to expect residents to deal with a rally banging garbage truck twice a day? Um, I don't know if that's viable. Uh, the other issue I have is these food delivery services, Uber Eats, DoorDash, that kind of thing. I already see it is a problem on Mission. They pull up to the curb, they park where it's red because they're only going to be in there a minute, they think. Uh, they zip in, they zip out. It's bad enough on Mission where the speed limit is twenty five miles an hour and, you know, at least if it's not rush hour in the afternoon or the morning, it's not that bad. But on Huntington, on that, on the north side of the street where there is zero shoulder or excess space to pull out, you're just going right from your space into the lanes. Where are those, you're going to be blocking a whole lane of traffic on Huntington now. That's a more serious problem. I wouldn't want to see these people parking on the residential streets. Uh, and running in and picking up their orders. The green curb is what, like a ten-minute, twenty-minute limit? So I, I, I don't, I, I, I just, I have a lot more reservations about the parking, so. I'm still on the fence about this. I, I, I have to say, I'm positive. I've already eaten at that restaurant up in Pasadena three times. I have a pot of their soup in my refrigerator waiting for me when I get home. It's really good. Um, and I would love to see them in town. I think they really have something to offer. Um, but I'm just, I really have a concern that we've asked these residents, um, put up with a lot and we're asking them to take our assurances one more time that this will be enforced tightly without their needing to be vigilant about it. And I think that's a big ask, so I'm just curious what everybody else thinks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dustin. Vice Chair Bro.
Oh gosh, I'm kind of all over the place with this one as well. Um, the first thing that I want to say, uh, since Commissioner Dustin kind of made a call to any city council members listening. Um, and I guess this is also, uh, directed towards Director Figaro. Um, there was a time when we had an economic development plan where we were strategizing what businesses could go into what locations. And I feel very bad for the restaurant, the, the owners of El Dorado. Because I do think that this is a restaurant that would do very well in town. But I think that the placement of where they have looked is not the best. And if we had a much more strategic plan of our revitalization of Huntington, we could have, it could have been happier for everybody. Um, and so my call is that if we can't talk about the environmental, I'm sorry, if we can't talk about economic development unless we start doing the general plan. And I would really like to make the request that we start the process of the general plan. It expires this year, not expires, but you know, they're usually revised every twenty years. It is the twenty-year mark. It's, it's due for us to do that. Um, so I'm not going to address the trash situation. I, you know, we all agree that it's a concern. Um, uh, the parking lot is simply too small uh, for a business plan that indicates that ninety percent of its business will be takeout. Um, that the food delivery services, the food delivery apps will just make this parking lot completely congested. Um, I think it will also impact the residential area behind with the overflow of parking. Um, everything that Commissioner Dustin said. Um, I used to work in a restaurant and the one thing I will say is at that restaurant, there was very restricted parking in the neighborhood. It was, it was in a residential area. And the owner was very clear on where we were allowed to park. And it was like, if you were caught not parking in a certain area, then you were, hours were taken away from you. Tips percentage were taken away from you, like it was enforced by the owner. Um, so I do have the feeling that, given the presentation that we received from the owner of El Dorado, that I think that I think that they would be very conscious of the parking limitations, at least in terms of employee parking impacting residential. Um, and I don't know the value of selling beer in this location. I understand that it's just an additive for people who are in the restaurant. But if ninety percent of the takeout or ninety percent of everything is takeout, then it's such a small portion of their income. And given that, uh, all of Commissioner Dustin's research on the A B C and not entirely convinced they need a beer and wine license. So, uh, that's kind of where I sit. Which is inconclusive. Sorry, but thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, I think I'm probably a little bit different than the majority, but a shock. And, but I, I guess I want to be really supportive of business in San Antonio, General. I just look around the city and it just pains me to see vacancies and not only does it hurt us in tax money, but I just think it hurts the neighborhood that we want, the neighborhood field that we want, the neighborhood services that we want. And I know we can all argue about what the services should be. Should, should this be retail? Because that, that would be less parking, not on a particular sale. I mean, do we want office? I mean, you can, can dictate that? This is what we have and they've come to us and they've asked us to support the business. And I from one would like to do that. And the other problem I have, and I just, this is just a general comment, I always had problems with a, a situation where there's multiple tenants and that poor last tenant. Everything we hate about the other four tenants against the duck on the fifth one, I, I really, I really think that's unfair. I really have trouble with that. You're the one who's going to have to take care of all the problems that Starbucks has caused. Hey, we need to do a better job enforcing on Starbucks. And we're told that we're now going to be revving up. I hope that's true. If that's true, and because we, we do have new people and, and that's good. But that's on Starbucks. That's a lot on these people unless and until they show us they are not neighbors. That's just a general problem I have. I, I just, I just don't think it's fair. So I would really hesitate to do that. You say we're dumping all those problems, but the other tenants, I'm, I'm personally not going to do that. Now, how is that? I don't know how I feel about the alcohol C U P because I too think alcohol can bring a lot of problems. I had forgotten about the state, well, I had forgotten about the state law. I'd forgotten that it didn't sunset till twenty twenty six. So I'm not saying that you would take advantage of that, but it does bother me that takeout is, um, allowed by, by state law now. And so I, so I'm actually a little bit more on the fence. And I understand what Commissioner Brody says about piecemeal and I do understand that. But I might be more willing to say, come in, show us how, that you are good neighbors. Show us that you can do the takeout food, do it well, and then come back and we'll let you have your beer and wine. I'm not saying that's a good idea. I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that out there as something perhaps to consider. Uh, but all in all, I feel and want to be supportive of the parking. Um, I actually, I can't, I know I'm changing myself to say this, but I've never had a problem with parking in that area. Uh, for any place I've gone, you just, I've just never had a problem, whatever time of day. Um, I am retired, so I'm not going in necessarily at the busiest hours. But I am going in different days, pretty weekends, different hours of the day. And I personally, like I said, I'm not changing myself. I've never had a problem. So I, so I don't know. Um, and some of this enforcement issues, yeah, better be a good neighbor. Because we want the neighbors in our city. I, I feel very strongly about that. So, um, that's the way, the way that I, I.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm very receptive to all comments that were made and, and I, I want to promote businesses coming into San Marino and adding value to, to the community as well as, as additional options. Um, unfortunately, we've, in the last year, we've lost some really good locations in the, the town, which is not the trend we want to see. Um, to Vice Chair's point of the economic development and the best location for a restaurant of this type. Um, I think that could have been thought out in strategy. Obviously, whether it's to backfill some of those locations that are now vacant or, you know, that have parking would be worse, you know, susceptible to, uh, receptive to folks actually be able to dine in. Having the business not be just a grab and go, right? To the point of one of the, um, community, community members that said, this is a place you want to sit and enjoy and, you know, and then and then it makes sense for a, uh, beer and wine license because then you would sit and enjoy as opposed to grab and go and, you know, down your beer. So there, there's a lot of good conversation and, and it all's fronts. Um, but I think where I stand on this is I want to see businesses come into this city. I don't want, uh, you know, and I want them to know what the expectations are, which I think, um, from the various comments from commissioners as well as community members, you know, it is going to be a challenge, but you know, if you're up to the challenge, I, I think myself, I'd be supportive of the business entering the, in the community. And, um, you know, myself, I frequent that plaza every week and I, I actually walk from my home to that plaza. So I don't, I don't take a parking. So I'll go there and I'll enjoy it. I look forward to a business, uh, to backfill the, um, restaurant that was there, which I also frequented. So, um, I think I would be able to support the C U P for the parking so they can establish your business and show they're going to be a good neighbor. I don't see, again, the need of granting conditions permit for alcohol sales. Um, just because for the sake of granting, I think there has to be a good, a better reasoning behind it, a better for the business that you are going to run, you admittedly stated, you're going to be a grab and go ninety percent. Uh, there will be limited seating inside and you're going to be placing your um, meals on, on a to-go box anyways, even if I do dine in your establishment, right? That already sets the tone that you know, you don't need to stay and enjoy within our, our environment. So, um, yeah, I, I would be amenable to, uh, approving the C U P for the parking, but not for the liquor license so that the business can come into the city and operate, uh, from what I hear, a good restaurant. Um, before the commission enters into the mission on whatever motion is, uh, posed. Um, there will have to be a reasoning for the denial, potential denial of the alcohol uh, request. Uh, and again, um, missions have approved alcohol requests. Similar to the restaurant requests that you're listening to tonight. So we would have to define what that nexus is to the the denial to make sure that we capture that in the resolution and, uh, to make sure that the city is prepared to defend it.
So you're asking, are you asking for us to, uh, provide land use impacts as a basis for denial?
I mean, aren't you looking for which finding was not able to be met? Because, I mean, that's exactly why I'm fell on the side of in support of the C U P. I agree. It doesn't make, to me, business sense to have a liquor license when you're doing mostly takeout business. I think they're not going to really make a lot of money from that. But it's not for me to make a decision about what they're, how they're going to do their business. I can make all the findings, so I'm, that's why I'm in support of that C U P.
The C U P for the liquor license, you said?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, if you're going to say no to the C U P, you have to be able, it's just like you got to say which of these findings you can't make.
More concerned with the marketing. It's going to take place, there will be apparent signage and, and how they're presenting their business. That'll determine in my mind, customers that will come in and what the customers expect. And we don't have that before us and that's very disturbing to me.
I'll just share too. I mean, there's, I think everybody has got the sayings or wariness because of what we went through with Starbucks. Um, but to Chairman or to Commissioner Wright's point, you know, not holding this tenant or potential tenant responsible for the sins of, you know, previous tenants. Um, from what I've seen of how they run their business in Pasadena, I mean, one thing that is clearly evident is they know how to hire people. There is not one person in that business that isn't just a really outstanding customer service oriented person. It was markedly visible. Um, so they, I think they are attuned to customer service and residents being a customer who live in that neighborhood. But it's, I, I understand we're all a little bit shy about the cities or upping their game in terms of code. One thing that I haven't thought of when you were mentioning that is if you have multiple restaurant tenants in that location, there's a chance they might end up starting to police each other rather than the tenants or the residents having to do it because now if, if the city show up saying, hey, the dumpster is always full, you know, these people might say, well, you know, it's not us. Here's pictures, it's all Starbucks material that's filling up the volume. Maybe now that's a positive drive, I don't.
Well, I could, I was, I just can say I could support the, because again, I want to support business, but I will say that your finding is what troubles me because finding number three says the post-conditional use will allow the applicant to serve beer and wine with complete meals only. Um, that's what I was looking at. It, it, so, alright, so you're saying that that could still be to go?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess it could.
And to go meaning because of state law?
No, I understand that. And I guess our question would be whether we think that's detrimental.
I mean, every, every, every number forty-one license in town, they all have the ability to sell with, as carryout.
Right, because of the COVID law, right, that will fund that. So that's, that's only my issue, but I, I could be supportive of.
I just, I, I want to, um, just go back with my comment. I don't want to make it sound as though I'm not supportive of this business going in because I do think that you will be very successful in those town. Um, uh, especially based on the comments that I've heard about your food. Um, I just it's the, and, and Commissioner Wright is, is, sure, right, is right. Um, you, like, El Dorado should not be punished for Starbucks being a inadequate neighbor for the last however many years. Um, so it, you know, it's a tough call. I, you know, I, I mean, my I've been going back and forth with everything that everybody says.
So do we have a motion? Um, yeah, let me throw something out as a possibility and it depends if the applicant is agreeable. Um, I, I would feel comfortable in voting for this if we had everything before us, including a little more color on the parking than the, uh, not so much the garbage collection, but the parking and the business itself. So, uh, and that includes signage. So I would move to continue C U P twenty-two dash oh five and twenty-two dash oh six. So we can have a, a complete application before us and not a piecemeal application.
Director Figaro, so ju- just to, um, actually a discussion, not every business, although every business does want to sign, at least you have a sign. And it's really, I, I understand that, that the concept is that there might be piecemeal to this, but really the operation is separate from the sign. Uh, the sign can come in at any time, but it can get amended at any time. It's not really, it's not pertinent to the operation of the, uh, restaurant itself.
I disagree entirely. I think it's highly, and that is relevant to the operating.
That could be a discussion that is, uh,
That could be a discussion that is, can be held with the commission, but in terms of a practical planning perspective, one does not need the other.
I will just say I'm not in support of continuing this to have a complete package for the sign. I think the sign can come at a later date. I am curious, can we make a condition for the parking that employees are not allowed to park in the residential area?
I think that's already.
Oh, it already said that? Yeah, yeah, it's already. Well, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brody, did you make a motion or just a suggest? I, I, I'm not in support of that.
But we have a motion for a continued. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies. Do we have another motion?
Yeah, I, I would, especially in light of the fact that there's no, I just lost my strike. There's no license. There's no selling alcohol near this area. I would move to approve conditional use permit number received twenty-two zero five and twenty-two zero six at twenty-two seventy-seven, nineteen drive.
In terms of making a motion, you can refer to the draft resolution, which is Resolution twenty-three zero eight, which incorporates both CUPs and the sequel plans.
I will do that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wright. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second from Vice Chair Boyle. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brody. Commissioner Dustin.
I want to clarify this. This is going to incorporate the conditions that you have stipulated already, and, yes.
Commissioner, right? Yes. Vice Chair, well. Yes. Chair Chang.
Yes.
The motion passes for one.
All right, that concludes the agenda items. We'll move on to the the calendar adoption of approval resolution number PCR twenty-three dash oh nine for desire view case number DR twenty-one thirty-five and twenty-two fifty-four at one four two four Bradford Road.
To approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle.
Yes.
Chair Chang.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes for the meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
To approve.
Vice Chair with the motion and second by Chair Wright. Sorry, Commissioner. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle.
Yes.
And Chair Chang.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Thank you. Director's report. Director Figueroa, do you have anything to report?
Not much. Would like to take this opportunity for a couple of things. One, just to remind all of you that if at any time you are aware that you will not be making a meeting, if you can let staff know as soon as possible so we can alert the alternate members. Staff will be reaching out to you, Mr. Chair, and Vice Chair to discuss protocols for this upcoming term. Just make sure that we're under effective meeting as we have the last year. And another reminder, again, just having difficult conversations with residents about doing work that is outside the scope of the approved plans. Not only does it it could potentially trigger additional public areas, but it could also trigger the installation of fire sprinklers and fire alarms if it, if it goes past a certain percentage of approved work. So it's really important that homeowners, applicants, contractors, contact staff immediately if they feel they need to make any changes to the approved scope of work so that we can guide them through that process. And that completes the director's report. Thank you.
Good question. Is that purely dollar amount or does that, the or I'm sorry, you said a certain percentage of the work that's being done?
Right, so.
So is that also evaluation or no?
No, it's just based on those four areas.
Right. Thank you very much. And written communications or any distributions? Nothing? Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. At this time, we'll adjourn our July meeting. We'll see you in August. Thank you.